Twenty-six, city council meeting. Introduction to the meeting and acknowledge that the press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with Freedom of Information Act. Please join me as we stand for the invocation followed by the Fledge of Allegiance. Father, we thank you for the beauty of the day. We thank you for this part of paradise that we get to live and work and play in, help us to be good stewards, and make decisions for the greater good in your name of pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation of God.
Thank you. Nicole Rocco.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bogosian.
Here.
Councilmember Han.
Here.
Councilmember Myers.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Popson.
Here.
Councilmember Streetman.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Pounds.
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. First item on our agenda is citizens' comments. Nicole, we have signed up.
Mr. Randy Bell.
Okay, so nothing personal here, but just my views at this point. And I'm just gonna read. Personally, I could not be more disappointed and disillusioned with council given the support that I and like-minded citizens have placed in this leadership. Unusually quiet on the sidelines, I strongly disagreed with suspending the ordinance requiring standing committees to meet. My belief it would consolidate agenda control in content with a city administrator and mayor, thus damaging our weak mayor, weak administrator, strong council form of government. Committee chair ownership of critical topics doesn't appear to exist, such as the Marina lease. I was a staunch advocate for the reduction of council size from nine to seven, but given the de facto status of how we're now operating, I am fully opposed to this change. Every council member up here has an equal voice. Agenda items may be added over the objection of the mayor with a majority vote. The mayor has no extraordinary power, and in the absence of standing committees should not act alone in concert with city administration to control critical information flow and discussion. We witnessed on several occasions the stifling of public discussion and consideration. In particular note, councilmember Myers, when asked at the one fifty-six mark on six twenty-eight, if she may offer a motion to amend the lease or to accept the lease as written, Mayor Pounds incorrectly stated no. And Administrator Forgoso offered no counter to the fact that she was indeed under the Roberts rules allowed to do that. Leadership on this Marina lease discussions is unacceptable to any knowledgeable and engaged citizen. Unfortunately, most remain silent. The council should simply vote as required on the lease transfers as is, and fully engage in the interest of the residents and property owners. While I remain supportive of the transfer of the Marina leases, it's imperative that council listen to the advice of Brian Kitz, our appointed real estate attorney on matters of due diligence. He was hired to be point on real estate issues, not our municipal attorney. Codify the specific limitations on the number of boat vessels. Provide an engineered parking plan agreed by Islander seventy-one in the new tenant. Self-serve alcohol consumption, in my opinion, from a convenience store, because it has always happened, is not in the best interest of a family community and is nothing more than a liability waiting to happen. And recognize the shared parking already belongs to the city. It is not a bargaining chip in these discussions. The current mistake belongs to city administration. Approving an uncodified amended lease that so far has yielded vague ambiguous intent does not represent community interest. Making a critical mistake twice on the same arena is unacceptable. You cannot act by stating, "We'll find out what is in it after we approve it." We've all heard that one before. When you build a house without a blueprint, you know the consequence. This unfortunately is exactly the path that we're on. Thank you.
Mr. Jim Ray.
All right, where's my list?
Ms. Suzy Wheeler.
Thank you. As a resident, I'm very concerned about the Marina lease transfer. First, because it's a vital part of our island that was purchased by the residents for the residents. Second, because previous councils have blessed us with poor lease, that always benefits the tenants and not the residents. I firmly believe that characterizing this as a simple lease transfer is at best misleading. A simple lease transfer transfers an existing list as written to a new tenant. That's not what is happening here. There are multiple amendments which I believe alter the purpose of the Marina and benefit the tenant, not the residents. I believe that the order of operations on the transfer is completely out of whack. Let me be clear, I am not against a lease transfer. However, I want it done correctly and with council mindful that their fiduciary duty is to residents, not the new or existing tenants. I feel that several things need to happen before there is an agreement. First, an audit should be performed by, of the existing tenant. Unfortunately, previous councils removed that provision. I don't know how this council can attest to no default if they haven't even looked at the possibility. Second, council hired expert legal advice for this transaction. The advice was to get nine due diligence items completed. To my knowledge, these items are either incomplete or refused. Some members of council have decided that the expert legal advice is irrelevant. This has backfired in the past and I see the same thing happening again. I can't understand how with a multimillion dollar deal, council would ignore expert legal advice. Without due diligence, the deal should not go through. I've asked several times for a residence forum to address council as a whole on the record. These are questions for council and not Mr. Schuler. He was provided an opportunity to give his presentation. Now, we want to be able to ask council serious questions on the record and in public. As that has not happened, I would ask that council suspend the rules this evening to allow for the open discussion or table the second reading to allow for such a forum. I'd also like to poll each member of council with following questions. One, has Mr. Schuler met all of the nine items of due diligence as advised by legal counsel? Two, has Mr. Schuler agreed to put all of his promises in writing to your satisfaction? Three, are you willing to put the audit clause back in the lease? Four, have you had the time and opportunity to participate in the lease negotiations as they are happening, not after the fact? Five, will you review the financial? Will you do the financial review of the current tenant prior to the transfer of the lease? As I understand, it's already budgeted. Six, will you close the loopholes of revenue streams that are lost to the city with the ability of layered transactions? Seven, will you require Mr. Schuler to sign a personal guarantee? The one-time prepaid rent evaporates in the first year, leaving no security and no guarantee. Eight, why in the world are you giving away the yellow private parking lot in the amendments? Nine, have you been threatened with a lawsuit if you don't agree to this transfer? If so, I believe that's completely unacceptable and smacks of tampering and influencing. I implore you to do what is right for the residents, to uphold your fiduciary duty, and to actually represent the people who elected you. Thank you.
Ms. Elizabeth Fisher.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Fisher. I am the co-owner of Fisher Recycling and Glass Eco Surfaces. And I want to thank John Bogosian for putting this forth through the Environmental Advisory Committee. You'll be discussing some glass recycling potential drop sites on the island. I just want to give you a couple of highlights of our company. We've been established in Charleston, South Carolina since nineteen ninety-two. And we do commercial glass collection service. And while most of that glass, well, I would say a small percentage of that glass goes to our countertop business, so it is a closing the loop of a product there. The majority of the glass is recycled in South Carolina. We are the only waste hauler that's currently in the Charleston area that is effectively and purposefully recycling the glass. So we're introducing this to the Isle of Palms as a cohesive municipality effort to do a couple of drop sites on the island to get recognition. First of all, it would be the first municipality in this area to take it on as a group. We know that that's a very exciting thing for good public recognition and an exciting opportunity to shine in Charleston and in South Carolina as a whole to be a municipality that engages in glass recycling for the better of the community. Thank you.
Mr. Nick Mueller.
Hi, my name is Nick Mueller. I'm a lifelong resident of the island and I have a PhD in accounting and auditing. I teach about fiduciary duties in all of my classes, and it is imperative that the council acts in the best interests of the residents and not the Marina lessee. I advise the council to carefully consider anything that is not a simple lease transfer. A simple lease transfer being one with no changes or amendments. Previous council members have failed residents time and time again, with each new amendment taking away more access from the residents. For years, the Marina has operated without an audit, which is mind-boggling. This has taken away a major safeguard of the lease agreement. A review is not an audit and did not meet the minimum fiduciary duties to residents. Contrary to some council members' opinion, a review does not absolve the council from its fiduciary duty to residents. At a minimum, the council should require a complete appraisal of the property, appraisal of the value of services, and a risk assessment of the property prior to any lease transfer. Pass a simple lease transfer, if you must, one that has no additional amendments or changes. Do not pass a second reading to another poorly written understood lease with amendments that have not been thoroughly vetted by an experienced real estate attorney working on the citizen's behalf. Before signing anything new, get the appraisal of the property and its services and have the expert analyze the risks associated with each amendment. That is a minimum that you should require. I implore you to remember by law, your fiduciary duty to the residents of the island and not the tenant.
Mr. Chaz Akers.
Good evening, council. My name is Chaz Akers. I've been recently appointed to the ATAX Committee. Just to give you a little background, I'm new to the island less than two years. Born and raised in Louisiana, adult life in San Francisco, and thirty years as a marketing professional, being either employed or working for clients such as Williams Sonoma, Discovery Channel, and Disney. Prior to me starting my own advertising consulting business, I managed a twenty-five million dollar budget for redenvelope.com that is comparable in today's dollars as to what the CVB is currently managing on behalf of the area of Charleston. First off, I'd like to thank the current and prior members of the ATAX Committee that have made significant progress for all of us as it relates to identifying significant issues related to the actual legislation and management mechanism behind the ATAX initiative. Congratulations to a job well done. As you, as you may know, some of our members are attorneys and I am a marketer. Lawyers take and use facts to their advantage. Marketers manipulate people through their ego and persona to get them to take some kind of action. Buy a car, vote for a politician, et cetera. We're both expert storytellers and some of the best BS artists in the entire world. A classic tool in the marketing arsenal is clickbait headline amplification to create awareness, and there is nothing better than drama. So as Southerners, we love stories. And I'm gonna tell you a story. In Louisiana, we would call it a shotgun wedding. You want ATAX dollars, you must choose X. In India, they call it an arranged marriage. You want ATAX money, you must only do X. Of course, what is really missing from these relationships is a mutual partnership that is built on respect, trust, and ultimately love. Both of the partners were not able to create their own contract that spelled out that relationship, but they endured for twenty-five years. They built assets, they created wealth. They raised children. Those being our tourists. But as the relationship never had a contract, each party took only what they could and made the best of things with mutual benefits. One day, one of the partners was making a million dollars now. Feeling unloved and ignored and just hated the relationship even though there was so much prosperity shared amongst the couple. Shopping at the grocery store. He sees attractive opportunities. He calls his buddy at the other beach to find his new relationship with his significant other is great, but yet they haven't hit rocky times. The grass always looks greener, but you never know the truth, and there will be a cost to pay. First off, you never lose your ex in a divorce. And unlike the movies, trust me, because I'm divorced, it's not unicorns and puppies. They almost never try to go the extra mile for you ever again with, as because of no incentive. Secondly, the divorce is very expensive. No alimony and no child support. Your partner had more assets than you that they were contributing to the pie, but you will now live as a single parent, have less money, and having to afford what and your kids were accustomed to.
Mr. Akers, I'm sorry, is, we allow three minutes.
Okay, so I'll finish. Basically, in summary, our largest issue here is the fact that the CVB gets a grant money that is roughly thirty percent of their total marketing spend. That grant can only be given to one regional marketing authority. If we walk away from this relationship, we stand to lose basically a two-to-one ratio of our marketing spend plus the overall strength and, and the relative performance of fixed assets of headcount to actual media marketing spend. I encourage you to vote positive to approve the the budget that has been presented, and I hopefully want to work more with the CVB to ensure that we come together and create a contract that is mutually beneficial for both Isle of Palms and the CVB. Thank you.
Thank you. Item is special presentations. I'm gonna ask Janice Ladd, our HR manager, to come and introduce our new city employees that we've had for the first six or seven months of this year. So Janice. Desiree, welcome. I didn't even know you were on the screen. For those of you who can't see, Desiree's on vacation, but zooming in tonight, so. Janice, start with, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and city council members. It's my pleasure to introduce you to new hires over the last several months, and there are eight of them. I'll start off with Parker Sis. As you can see, Parker Sis is part of our fire department. Parker was raised in Greenville, in Greenville, South Carolina. He joined IOP team after twelve years with the US Air Force, stationed in McIntyre Joint National Guard Base. Interesting fact with Parker, he overcome a very severe accident at a young age. He broke his right femur. They told him that he wasn't gonna be able to do the things that he would like to do in his lifetime, and here he is today as a firefighter. Congratulations. Jason Wright. Again, as you can see, another firefighter joined our team. Jason goes by the name of Gage. He comes from Martinez, Georgia, where he was a firefighter for the Grove Town Fire Department. Welcome. Jeannie Garrett. Jeannie works for our building department as a business license clerk. Before coming to IOP, she was stationed over in Boca Taw, Columbia, where she worked for the US Embassy. Jeannie has very talented fingers. She's a pianist. She plays piano for, and teaches for the last fifteen years. She does it for fun, for churches, and for choirs. Welcome, Jeannie. Matt Sims. Matt is also joining the building department in a new role that we just assigned down there for, as a zoning administrator. Matt comes from Louisville, Kentucky, where he was the project manager for the Kentucky Cabinet for Economic Development. Matt also graduated from the College of Charleston in environmental and sustain sustainability studies. Welcome, Matt. Jonathan Sorcener. Jonathan has been joining the team with the police department. Currently, he's uncertified, but will be going to the academy soon. Yes. He comes from Massachusetts, and prior to college, he was a combat photographer for the US Marine Corps. I know, interesting, interesting. Jace Kowalski. Jace is also with the police department as our code enforcement. Jace comes from Buffalo, New York, where he was the animal control officer. In his relocation, he calls himself a beach bum, so work environment life is wonderful on the island for Jace. I think there's two that are missing, but I want to announce them anyways. Anthony Young, he is a new CDL driver for the Public Works Department. He comes from Carolina Waste and South Carolina Port Authorities. And then Lenton Sharp. So Lenton Sharp is also with the Public Works Department, new position that we started in July in stormwater facility foreman. He comes with experience from Mount Pleasant. If you recognize him, he grew up on Sullivan's Island, where he did also eight years as a firefighter. Thank you very much and welcome to the team.
Thank you all for being here tonight. Welcome to the IOP family and look forward to working with each one of you. Janice, thank you for. Our next item is approval of previous meetings minutes. We can take all of these at once unless there happen to be changes. You can see each one of them listed there from our personnel committee, and again, thinking about the work shifting to the workshops, these are closing out all the committee meeting minutes from June. So our personnel committee on June first, all the way up through our city council workshop through July twelfth.
Both should do approve.
Second. Changes, questions, comments? All those in favor say aye. Next item, old business discussion and consideration of hosting several public listening sessions to receive input from residents regarding proposed regulations for short-term rentals. Just real quick, by update. So we had our joint meeting with the Planning Commission last month, which was essentially the handoff from Planning Commission to council to take their research and information and recommendations to us. At our workshop earlier this month, we had Dr. McLeod from the College of Charleston. At our next workshop, I think we should plan to review and discuss in detail the recommendations and suggestions from the Planning Commission, since we really haven't done that. But in the meantime, I would also love to suggest that we host several public listening sessions to receive input on this critical topic from our residents. Probably would like to schedule those during the month of September. Just, you know, the police just recently had community meetings and kind of divided the island into three or four sections, and so we may follow some similar setting like that, maybe even smaller sessions, but I would love a motion in a second, then we can get to discussion if you would like.
So move.
Second.
So questions or other ideas or comments or thoughts around, Jan?
I think this is a great idea. There's a lot of misinformation about what we are considering. I think it's a, it's a good proposal for the island to consider at this time, but we need to make sure that people understand it. So I think it's a great idea.
John would be, who would lead these sessions?
That's a to-be-determined. Did you raise your hand? Did you flinch?
I think, I think it's important to have entire council at least.
Totally.
Sessions instead of being led by one, because you'll get some kind of misinformation that you talk about, and I think if having the entire council present, if they had entertained questions throughout, it would be beneficial.
Completely agree, and they would be advertised sessions. So John, to your point, we could do that and not have to worry about a quorum, so absolutely.
Rusty. Yeah, would it be similar to, I mean, would we have a meeting at the rec or would it be in council chambers, or have we given it that much thought yet?
Logistics to be determined. I think you're gonna need to hold them all over the island personally.
Yeah.
Just to make it easy as possible.
And I do agree with councilmember Anderson. I think that there's a lot of information out there, not necessarily in my mind, a lot of misinformation, but certainly a lot of information that's, you know, that's flowing around. We've had other municipalities that have been, been dealing with this issue for quite a long time, and it's something that our planning commission has always been working on diligently for the last couple of years, so we owe it to the residents to have as many forums and public listening sessions and Q and A sessions as we can. Thanks.
Yeah, I think this is a great idea. I'd also like to somehow come up with a way of tallying people's opinions, votes, you know. I don't know how that would be done at, you know, a kind of a casual setting, but it seems to me that it would be nice to, to get some numbers behind what people are thinking.
Yeah, Katie, I think it's a good idea. You may have seen the Barrier Island Group has done a survey of, I don't know many, you'll come back on that, but that would certainly be another data point that we could have for resident input.
Yeah, because we do, we have gotten a lot of data so far, but I think what we're missing is, is the public opinion data point, so.
I'm just gonna echo everybody. I think personally, I think it's a huge personal property rights issue that should be discussed as much as possible.
Other questions, comments? Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose. Next item B, consideration of Cross and Visitor Bureau proposed fiscal twenty-three budget for the expenditure of the state ATAX. We have Helen Hill, CEO of Explorer Charleston with us tonight, and just while she's coming, real quick, by way of background. Our staff, along with Helen's staff, Laurie's and CFO's in the room tonight too, has spent the last few months, you know, coming up with a better budget, for lack of a better term, more detail, more specificity, and that has happened over the last number of months. And again, just as a reminder, this budget is for the thirty percent of the state ATAX that we're required to spend with a DMO of some form, and we've decided as a council for fiscal twenty-three, our DMO is the CVB slash Explorer Charleston. So we have your, your budget in front of us tonight in your packet. So Helen, welcome and thank you for coming.
Well, thank you.
Laurie, you too, thank you.
I just wanted to first of all, thank each one of you for your time, talent, and treasure to serve, because I know it's difficult, and you certainly give of your time to make this community a better place. And as the people who get to sell the Isle of Palms every day, we are very thankful for you. I am Helen Hill, the CEO of Explorer Charleston. You introduced Laurie. And Laurie and I are both natives, and I've had the opportunity to work selling the Isle of Palms for thirty-six years, when I counted up the years. My very first job was to be the concierge at Wild Dunes Resort, and then I went to Explorer Charleston, and I've been there ever since. And so I hadn't met Mr. Akers until tonight, but Mr. Akers, we can't break up. I'm in love with the Isle of Palms. Explorer Charleston is that five oh one C six organization that is led by a board of hospitality owners and managers and elected officials. We've been the beneficiary of great leadership for the Isle of Palms since the very early days with Mayor Carmen Bunch, who served on our board for sixteen years. Carmen was followed by Mayor Stili. We had my good friend Carol Rice, then Mayor Dick Cronin. Mayor Jimmy Carroll appointed three different members of council, Susan Hill Smith, John Moy, and my friend Carol Rice again. And then Mayor Powell, thank you for appointing Rusty to be on our board. We really appreciate it. You know, the simplest way to talk about what we do is to create an overnight visitor for our community. And when choosing a place for a vacation, a meeting, or even a wedding, today's travelers, they have a lot of options. And our goal is for the Isle of Palms to be what the potential visitor thinks of when they're doing their planning. And we know all good things happen when somebody chooses to spend the night, because that means they're gonna eat, drink, and shop, and create the maximum economic benefit for the Isle of Palms, and maybe even give someone a job. At last count, we have thirty-eight thousand folks that depend on tourism for a job in Charleston County. Now, fortunately, our community has weathered the ravages of COVID pretty well. The Isle of Palms and the greater tourism community have had record visitation, and we're so thankful that we were able to step forward and market and advertise the community when others in the country did not. Our reputation built over a long period of time really gave us that edge, that great place to do something outside. Over the last several months, as the mayor said, we've had much dialogue, several presentations, many meetings to you all, your staff team and accommodations tax committee, as well as Rusty's special committee that was created by the council. These months of collaboration have led to the FY twenty-three budget that's in your packet tonight. The feedback we received is reflected in a more detailed budget methodology, a new Isle of Palms online presence, and several other Isle of Palms specific advertising initiatives. Laurie and some of our team members had the opportunity to meet some of the new members of the Accommodation Tax Committee, and I'd like to congratulate the Personnel Committee and council for identifying and appointing folks with the impressive backgrounds in marketing, cultural arts, group sales, and now I know wedding and, and a salesperson and great counselor coming forth, Mr. Akers. We really embrace these new ideas, and we're excited about our new Isle of Palms chamber. We're really excited to work with them. Last, the Tourism Expenditure Review Committee, or TERP, amended the requirements for reporting, and we've worked very closely with your staff. Thank you, Debbie, for meeting all those requirements. And you'll see the results of that in your packet. In closing, I just want to assure you that our board and our staff, officials- In closing, I just want to assure you that our board and our staff of 53 people are 100% focused on filling your 424 room hotel rooms and your 1,004 rental units every single day. We really truly appreciate our long-term partnership and your support.
Helen, hang on just a sec. There are questions or around the budget or specific line items or the way it's presented?
Yeah. I would just ask for a point of clarification for everybody that's listening in this here meeting. And is my mic on? Yes, I, yes, okay. Council has already voted and the money for fiscal year 2023, which started July 1, is being paid to the Charleston Visiter Bureau. And nothing we're doing tonight will change that. What we're talking about is just reviewing and approving the budget. But if we don't approve the budget, that doesn't stop us from paying the money to CBB. Is that accurate?
Accurate.
I just want to make sure everybody understood what's going on.
John.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you for calling Helen. I, I do think that this is an improvement over, and I think you listened to the ATAX Committee and others and trying to isolate out the benefits and the line items to OP, but I do have some questions and allow me to ramble maybe a little bit, and then at the end I'll ask you a question. For example, website design, we spent 150 something thousand dollars last year and I don't, and now we're proposing to spend another 32,000, but I don't really see a website that's dedicated to the IOP that's different or distinguished from any other of the island communities. And we, they pay a fraction of what you pay. So I don't, yeah, and, and 150 or almost 200,000 for a website. I don't think Amazon spends that much on their website. I do see some media runs that seem to be reasonable, but my question is the knot, for example. Why is it important that the Isle of Palms to advertise for wedding venues? I mean, to me, wedding venues draw bachelor parties, bachelorette parties and those things, other than having a wedding like Wild Dunes potentially at the hotel or something. But that may or may not be necessarily what we want. That may not be the brand that we want. Maybe we want a more family, you know, in line with our residents first kind of philosophy. Maybe we want family oriented visitor style. This is the family island. So we're bringing families on vacation that tend to spend more, they're going to restaurants, they're not going to King Street and coming back at two in the morning and partying all night.
Right.
You know, they're spending money on that. So we're focusing our marketing on that. But it doesn't come across to me that that's what we're doing. And then I see there's, you know, $379,000 or 38% of our budget that seems to be overhit related. Maybe it's other stuff, but general destination market. So there's still some really concerns and I'm going to go back to what you said, which is our ATAX Advisory Task Force, their Task Force and which was led by Councilmember Streeman. And I think some good things gathered, one of it would says what the success looked like. Success is more accountability. So monthly, quarterly financial pulling from the DMO. Establish measure metrics, you know, financial reporting, specific dial fee so that I, and I don't know that this gets it. In other words, at the end of the year, will you be able to show me an invoice that you spent $20,000 with the knot for our marketing? So we can validate where our money's spent. I don't know if that comes across, but, and I don't even know who would do that on our part. Local focus, this branding idea that I talked about. So at the end of the day, I think that there is some, and I don't want to get a divorce or anything like this, but I think there's some better coordination that we can do to move the relationship forward. And what I would like to see, and we haven't even discussed this as a council, but that we hire our own consultant that has marketing background, that can work with you to make sure that our branding is getting across, that they're focused on in, in the right media advertising, that they work with you and our behalf, because I don't think it isn't. I think we're sending a million dollars into a black hole right now. And you're not, that's not your forte is to isolate it to an island like this. You're just destination marketing Charleston. I get the rising tides and all that. But if we had somebody working on our behalf with you, I think that would go a long way with this relationship. And so I'm not, and I'd like your opinion on that. And are you willing to do something like that? I mean, we've not discussed it as council or anything, but I'd be interested in your opinion.
And so the question you would like for me to answer is that?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, the, the 150 some odd thing for the website, Laurie, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's really website marketing. It's the marketing in the distance, not just buying the website. So you're right, probably more than Amazon. It's not the cost of building it. It was the cost of, of marketing and advertising around it. The wedding issue is specifically for that Wild Dunes guest, because destination weddings certainly create a lot of revenue. But I'm with you, you know, our main pillar is family marketing and we do that for you. And I would say that we are really excited about where we're headed and I can't thank you enough. I really do. We've had a great relationship with the, particularly with the new members of the Accommodation Tax Committee. I look forward to a lot more dialogue, because we want to sell what you want to sell, right? We've had a lot of success for you and we are going to continue to.
And my question around having a person work directly for, on our behalf with you that understands marketing and what we want, are you willing?
Well, is that what your new chamber's doing?
No.
Okay. I think they think that might be what they're doing.
Yeah. And I mean, that's, that's a budget I don't, I mean, we need to think through, but you know, John, to one of your questions about, you know, at the end of the year, when we get to June of next year, you know, part of what the Turk Committee at the state level has said is, you know, you need to look at the budget ahead of time. You need to monitor it, you know, define success and have metrics all the way through. And then at the end of the year, you need to, you need to look back period as well. So I mean, I think, you know, I think this budget is, is leaps and bounds higher, better than where we were. And I think when we go through the year, and I hope our advisory ATAX Committee will do this, because I think that's some of the work they need to be doing is looking at those metrics, putting a contract in place if we feel like we want one, putting, you know, success measures in place and doing the financial review to make sure we're, we're getting and the money's being spent where they're saying it's going to be spent. You know, this is a budget and a pro forma on go forward. But there needs to be an end of the year recap for sure to your question, I think, John.
But I will say we'll be willing to work with whoever you give us, because the Isle of Palms is critical to the overall sale and we really care about the success of the community.
Yeah, because one of the items on the Task Force Committee was create a staff position to dedicate managed tourism and relationship with DMO. You know, it was recommended.
Yeah, Rusty and Scott, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, couple of things here. Let me tee it up first. I know we're here to look at the budget here tonight, but I do want to say that I'm honored and privileged to be on the Board of Governors for the Explorer Charleston, the Charleston Visitor Bureau. And I've enjoyed my time on that, being appointed by the mayor and approved unanimously by council. So that's a real honor for me. I'm also going to, before say other, a couple of other comments, back when our July the 12th meeting, I had indicated to our group, had we had a budget vote that night, that I would recuse myself because I was assigned on the Board of Governors. I've gone back and researched that. I can't find any record at all where a person who's been afforded, appointed to the Board of Governors, not only at Isle of Palm, but in other municipalities have recused themselves from a budget vote. So I'm withdrawing that recusal. I intend to, I intend to participate in that. I think one reason is because I have a good bit of insight, being able to attend the monthly meetings to see the budgets that are presented at the Board of Governors meeting, to get more insight as to where that organization is going. And quite honestly, even though things could be improved, I think there's a lot of good things that are going on. Being appointed to chair the ATAX Task Force Committee, we had a number of people and it was a pretty diverse group. And we walked away from those five or six meetings that we had with three recommendations to council. And one of those top first and foremost was requesting more accountability, collaboration and local focus from the CBB. The city's only existing direct marketing organization at this point. And I think Helen and Laurie and their group have, really, they've done a lot of work on that. Now, have we seen the results of that yet? No, it's still a work in progress, but I think the openness is there, the willingness is there to be open and honest with us and to work with us in a, you know, in a good workable budget going forward, and one that we can have a lot more accountability. I feel good about that. Also, another area, support the development of the new Isle of Palms Chamber of Commerce, so they can act as an alternative DMO for the Isle of Palms in the future. They're a fledgling organization. They have absolutely a lot of work to do before they could even prove themselves to be a capable DMO. But that is an organization that you could see taking some of this local marketing that we talk about, that we need in the shoulder season and to be more specifically targeted to Isle of Palms and be able to take some of those dollars from the 30% and focus with that group there and also help an island organization that really needs our help and we think can really be a big benefit to our island going forward. And then the third area, of course, is the big elephant outside the room. And that's looking at some way that, you know, from a percentage of state ATAX monies, 30% that we have, that we are obligated all municipalities to participate in with a DMO, that somehow we look at that so that there's some sort of cap on the dollars or the percentage in going forward. So that was the three big takeaways that I had. But again, I feel good about the, about the relationship we have and the one that we're continuing to build. And my intention is to vote in favor of this, this budget.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah. All, all I was going to say is that, you know, I think to, one of the recommendations was to staff up some position. This budget's gotten big enough now where I think some collaborative staff work would be better. And I'm talking, it's, it's great to talk. It's great to have a budget. But the work that gets done on a daily basis and the work that gets done on a monthly or quarterly basis to set our image and to spend the money and direct it to where we think we're going to feel good about getting the best bang for the buck is worth a few dollars. You know, I'd like to see, I don't know, maybe 5%, you've got 35 or 40% overhead. I think if 5% of that stayed with us to fund a position to be a liaison with the CBB, I think we're going to be better off. Call it Chaz's marriage counselor if you'd like, but I think that we, I think the relationship would be better. I think we'd have better accountability between the two organizations. And we'd all, you know, be able to have that effective communication immediately rather than wait on an annual basis. So, you know, I would like to see us as a council, maybe, you know, peel off $50,000. The budget's going to continue to get bigger hopefully. And I think that if, you know, I think we could retain maybe 5% for our own good and to staff that position to help the relationship and to maintain our desire with your organization on a more consistent basis.
Okay. Is that something that you all have ever, like, do you have a Charleston desk? So, you know, I mean, and is that something that, that your organization could, could potentially do?
Well, either one thing that we, well, yes, we could, yes, we could do that. Yes. The, the interesting thing is the, some of our, we have so many visitor centers in other governments, right? And so that sometimes does create exactly what Councilmember Pierce was talking about, is that we have somebody on our staff that is in the visitor center in that government. So I hear, you know, we, we've actually talked a lot about that, that sometimes you, back to the marriage counselor, if you have somebody that, that you guys and girls can put your hands on, right? That maybe we can't get me on the phone, but you can get that person because they're in your office.
This would be our person.
Right.
Yeah, on our staff.
Well, that, well, those people are actually on both of the staffs.
Or could it come out of?
Yeah.
Could it come out of this budget?
Both at our, at our council, at our, those, all those positions we pay for, they're our staff members, right? Yeah. But they're your people.
Katie, did that answer your question or not?
Yeah. So I mean, that's, I think that originally this started as something that, that we would pay for, but it, this, it sounds to me like this is the potential that we could
Yeah.
Have, this could be the, the budget that I'm looking at here could have a line item or.
Well, the difference is are they by employee or they your employee, right? And they're, I mean, they're in the case of the one at Kiowa, they're our employee, but they serve Kiowa and they serve us. They do both.
So they're a dedicated liaison.
Exactly.
On, that's something, yeah. Maybe we look at the model. I think the concept is agreeable. It sounds like it's just how would we step it up?
Well, just it keeps the, as you said so eloquently, it keeps the lines of communication completely open, because you can always put your hands on that person.
Yeah. Well, yeah, and this once a month or, you know, once a year getting together and having everything happen in between, I, I think we need to get some, yeah. Needs to get tired.
Is that something that, that can be in this budget or is that something that needs to be in a future budget?
We could do it anytime. I mean, yeah, we could do it anytime.
Great. John, what's your reaction to that? Alternative kind of a Kiowa model, if you will, where it's on their staff, but dedicated to it. Say again, Scott?
No, just, I, I think it would be good to spend some time to hear more about how that all works.
I mean, I think that's like it's conceptually, that's the same thing I'm talking about. It's just like your staff. If you're doing that presently in Kiowa, somebody we should, we should call it Kiowa.
Yeah, you can talk to them about it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Jan. I think this is a great idea, because right now all we're doing is saying, what you're doing, we don't, we need more. And you're guessing what, what it is we need more of. I, I would like someone on our behalf to be able to tell you, this is what they need, because this is what I see they need and this is how we can fulfill it. And we don't have that now.
We're 100% committed to what that is, whatever it is that you want. I promise.
All right. So in front of us, we have a fiscal 23 budget that we need to do something with. I think this conversation's great and to look at a Kiowa model, I think we just ask our advisory council to take that up and run with it, with our CBB staff to, Laurie, were you going to say something? Sorry, can you shut up? Right. And then just let, let them come back to us with a proposal and let, work that through the advisory committee, Helen and Laurie, girl are fine with that. So taking the budget in front of us as it is, you know, motion and a second.
Motion to approve. Second.
Unison and unison. What question? Other questions or comments? Good conversation.
Yeah, I'm, I'm being nitpicky here, but I just want to make sure we're, you know, we've got the commitment to get this done fairly rapidly, the, on the Kiowa thing. I think it would be great to benefit this year's budget.
And to your point, I mean, we're
we're in, we're already in it.
26 days in, but you got 11 months to figure it out and get something to, I'm with you. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Helen, Laurie, thank you so much for coming again. Appreciate it. We've got our next item, we've got three items on concerning the Marina. We may take some individually, may take some after executive session. But this first one is discussion and consideration of disclosing the list of nine due diligence items requested by the city related to the Marina lease's assignment. Your motion and a second.
I make a motion, we release the nine to the public and we're talking only the questions that have been asked, not the material that, any material that may have been received.
Scott.
Second.
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 Sorry. I caught that. I got, even over the sirens. Questions, discussion? Claire.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important for all of us to understand that this Marina is currently leased until 2045. And as such, we do not have the right to make changes, make demands or mandate any changes that betters the city's position. We don't have that right. The only right that we have is to ensure that the existing lease doesn't harm this, that the, the transfer of the existing lease does not harm the city. Everybody in this room, I believe, agrees that the lease we currently have is terrible. It is awful. We can't fix that today, because we don't have that right. We are third parties to a business transaction between the current tenant and the new tenant. And all we can do is object to that business decision if it harms our position. So let's look at that for a minute. We do not have the right to demand due diligence. Because the city did not ask for due diligence with Mr. Barrigan. So releasing the due diligence does nothing but flame fire that does not need to exist, because we don't have the right to ask for it. We cannot require a personal guarantee. Because Mr. Barrigan's personal guarantee continues in place. We do not have the right to add any new language concerning audits. But if it doesn't already exist in the existing document. We cannot regain rights the city has waived in the past. All we can do is ensure that the city's position before transfer is not harmed with the transfer of the lease. I don't like any of this. I have transferred multiple leases personally that I did not like, but I did it because you have to follow the law. Now, we have an opportunity here. Because the new tenant. Has agreed to make some small changes that I believe benefit the citizens tremendously. We regain control of a parking lot that we have lost, that we had lost with the original lease. And we clear up obvious liability with onsite consumption. How do we do that? Currently, the city is liable on onsite consumption because we are allowing it and have allowed it for thirty years. If we transfer that liability to the new tenant. By allowing or clarifying in the lease that onsite consumption is in fact available. Then that liability goes to him in his license. That's all he asked for with this. This isn't a big giveaway. This isn't a benanzo. He's taking on the liability because he want a license because he's trying to run a business. This is the reality of the situation that we face. We cannot fix prior council mistakes with this transfer. Again, this is the sale of an asset between the tenant and the proposed new tenant. The city's position is not harmed by this transfer. The city benefits from parking and a transfer of liability to the tenant where it belongs. Yes, we got a fiduciary duty. All of us do. To all the residents of the island. I plan to fulfill that fiduciary duty by voting to transfer the Marina lease. How does that? Relate to the question on the table of do we release the due diligence items? We don't have a right to ask for due diligence. We did it and our, our lawyers suggested if I was going to ask, this is stuff I'd ask for, but we never right to do any of that. Because we never asked for it from Mr. Barrigan. Nobody likes that. I see all kinds of people's heads nodding here that they're in disagreement. I don't like it. Doesn't mean we can do it. We have to follow the law. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Katie.
So. Whether or not we have a right to the due diligence is not a question, I don't think, for any of us up here. It was a question that we specifically asked of our attorneys that we have hired as a city. And they produced the documents, they submitted the documents, they informed us that these requests were reasonable. In the ordinary course of business. If we want to act in a reasonable manner. As city council people in, with a fiduciary duty. What we have to do is respect. The opinion of our attorney who wrote these issues, these questions. If these were not necessary, it would have been really nice if we had been told that two months ago. That is not what we were told two months ago. They were sent, they were requested, they have been requested over and over and over again. And I find it.
Yes, I would just advise council members not to disclose any attorney-client communications.
Just for direct or not.
I'm not, I'm just giving my opinions as Mr. Hawn did. So. Um. These due diligence requests are similar to discovery requests that are sent out in litigation. It is a request. It's not special. It is not attorney-client privileged or anything of that nature. It is simply a question. That is what I have been told by numerous people, very common and typical in the business. There is no reason. Why we cannot share with the public what these questions are. When people start refusing to share things. It does lend, make, it makes people wonder why. When people refuse to answer questions, it makes people wonder why also. So I would just like to say that I feel like we owe it to the citizens to, at the very least, let them know what questions we have asked.
Rusty. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It looks like we segwayed from old business C to old business D. Very quickly here and we're supposed to be dealing with C. Uh, I mean, personally discussing considerations, disclosing the list of nine due diligence items requested by the city. And, and disclosing those to the public, I don't necessarily have a problem with that myself. Uh, you know, and we haven't really gotten into item D yet. I've got my thoughts on that, which are very, very similar to Councilmember Han. Uh, almost verbatim, I would say. So anyway, I'll, I'll reserve those comments, but uh, as far as item C. Uh, if, if it's the will of council, I have no problem with releasing those.
The only thing I'll say is not only do I have not a problem, I think we should release them and I'll reserve my comments and because I. Virtually disagree with everything Councilman Brown said, so I'll reserve those uh, and when we get to the next agenda item.
Scott. Yeah, I, I just think in the spirit of disclosure, transparency, we're not, we're not talking about disclosing responses. Uh, we're just talking about. Disclosing to the public what we are asking for as part of our fiduciary due diligence process. These are very benign items.
We've got a motion and a second. We need a roll call vote on this. Let's do that Nicole on this one.
Okay. Councilmember Pierce.
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Myers.
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Pugosian.
Aye.
Councilmember Han.
Nay.
Mayor Pounds.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to one.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Desiree. Well, I thought that was God talking to people. Kind of was, actually. Yes.
Um, I just want to know how the council expects the list of. Due diligence items that have been requested, how, how will those be released? Uh, we did receive one freedom of information after class for that list. We could disclose it upon request. Is there any expectation different than that that we do know about?
What's the simplest way of doing it?
I mean, you could put it on the website, quite honestly.
Put it on the website.
Yeah, that's easier than FOIA, right?
Yes.
I mean, yeah, I mean, just from a procedural standpoint.
Cause there's a, you know, on the project list on the website, Desiree, I wonder if we could just add an item underneath Marina update. And just have a click to a, to a document.
Okay, thank you.
It was, I'm just looking down the line here to make sure that's.
I think we posted as quickly as possible to the website. I think that would satisfy the requirement.
John.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, Desiree, good. She gave me the finger. It's just those that you couldn't see that. It was a thumb nose. So our next item is uh, Rusty to segue to item D, discussion of consent of Marina assignments to Morgan Creek LLC and propose amendments to the Marina store and Marina operations leases. Let me just piggyback Blair just a touch. You know, in April, we were asked to do a simple assignment of this lease. Conversations and meetings after that led to a, a. An amendment, call it small, call it minor, with a few changes and tightening up some of the language with the current lease that provides gains for the city. With the current amendment, in my opinion, the city's position is improved in a number of cases and I won't repeat everything Blair said, but just a couple of additional, additional items. You know, from a guarantee standpoint, we have a personal guarantee with the existing uh, leaseholder. You know, that could be. That will continue and would be added to with the corporate guarantee. Uh, from, from an entity that has a whole lot more assets to it. We have clarity on the consumption issue. So whether you agree with the consumption or not. We would at least have amendments that provide a regulated and supervised consumption area to the existing footprint where such consumption has been present for decades. We would have a new option for the residents in a boat club for those that would be interested in doing that. We would have clearly defined mix of businesses. These are all the things that are in our existing amendment as it sits today. That's in the packet for city council. So we'd have a clearly defined mix of businesses. We have controls and thresholds and limits of expansion for all commercial activities, including boat club, ensuring, ensuring a balance of business at the Marina. The shared lot back to the city again, not from an ownership standpoint, we own the dirt, but from a control standpoint. You know, this has been a source of conflict, so we would remove the tenant control of the managerial authority of that shared lot on the intercoastal side of the Marina. We have improved controls on future assignments and subletting that do not exist with the present lease. We have allowances for operational improvements to improve dry storage capabilities that do not entail dry stack. And we have controls on related party transactions that do not presently exist. The controls ensure the city receives a hundred and twenty percent of fair market value rent for any such transactions through verifiable procedures. So all that would go away if we just do, you know, what's been suggested and as is assignment. So we put this item on the agenda here, uh, just to allow for an additional review of the amendments and have a public discourse on the amendments. We may want to do that. Post-executive session, just to hear from our attorneys and get some guidance on that. Uh, but I'll just stop there for a moment and see if there are comments or questions.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, just, just on two items you raised and I don't, I don't want to go count point, pointer, or. Point, counterpoint here, but I think on the first one and, and uh, jumping if I'm mistaken, but the latest version that came in where they uh. Uh, basically proposed a deposit instead of a um, or I'm sorry prepaid instead of a deposit. Um, we don't have the guarantee and I think the last sentence in that um. Particular clause, I'm going from memory, I think it was number ten where uh, we actually lose the guarantee. They're asking us to uh, forego all current and, you know, prior guarantees. And our attorneys can advise us on that's the correct interpretation, but I think we lose all hooks and all guarantees on that particular clause. The second one, one other one you mentioned was the um, uh, the strengthening of the transferability clauses. We don't know who owns the businesses, so I don't know. I think that's an unenforceable clause at this point. So. Um, I think we need to, you know, go through these one by one, but. I think that uh, what you're saying may, may be possibly incorrect. Thank you.
Jan.
Um, you said we have control over sub, subletting. And um, I am very confused about the word affiliate that appears in the lease. The, the adapter, it's, it appears to me that if. A business is an affiliate. Of. The, the Marina. Proposed Lacy, Lacer, then they automatically. Are approved and we have no control over what that, whether that affiliate is allowed in or out of the, whether we approve of that lease or not. Um, I think it needs clarification from legal advice on that.
Um. We need to go into executive session to discuss a lot of these things. I'm just not sure about when it's the correct time. Maybe we go through the rest of the agenda. And we have um, heavy discussion on this one item. But I think at least being an executive session. Yeah, I, I agree. I, I think, I think there's. Fundamentally, I have significant issues with these amendments because they. There's flaws into them in itself, but they don't match what. The proposed tenant says he wants to do with the agreement. And you can drive a truck through, through this agreement. So I think we have to go through it if that's the, the route that we want to go. We're going to have to go through this executive session. Line by line. Through it, but. I want, I do want to address before we go there where Congressman Han said, I, I do. You say that. We should pass the lease as long as the city's not harmed, that we're a third party. We don't know if we're harmed unless we do the due diligence. I mean, that's why we're asking for the due diligence to ensure that we aren't harmed. And when you say we cannot better our position. These amendments are all intended to better our position. So by your own argument, we shouldn't even be entertaining these amendments. We should throw them out. We should go back. If our obligation is to sign the lease, then we should entertain assigning existing lease. If by your own argument.
Well, without consent. We cannot better our position without consent. We cannot mandate anything is what I'm saying.
Mandating anything.
We have, we have consent of the, of the tenant.
Once we've gone down the road of negotiation, that changes.
I think, I don't want to get into the debate here, but I think this is fundamental, has a fundamental issue. That we're going to have to address. Either we're going to burn these things up. Or we're going to go back to existing lease uh, and, and entertain whether we assign that.
Can I?
I think we should move on and do this in executive session.
Can I make a suggestion first? Um, I just, I feel like we're, we keep looking at this thing in. As a, a roundabout in circle or I, I don't know exactly how to say it, but to me, there, there, it's a two-step process. There's a, there's a one and then there's a two A and a two B. One is the due diligence. We were told we needed it. If we don't get it. Then there is no step two. That's it. And so. If they're willing to comply with what we've asked for, then we shouldn't even go to step two. If, if they're not willing to answer some ordinary reasonable questions. Today. In July of twenty twenty-two on the first date. What is the relationship going to be like twenty-three years down the road? Why, they have already. We, we're starting this off on a bad foot. So the due diligence thing is number one for me. If we can somehow get past that. I have some questions for the attorneys on that. If we can get past the due diligence, then I believe that brings us to two. And there's an A and a B. And when we get to two, the A is whether we go with the original existing lease. Or the B, which is the amendments. And I will tell you that using words like small. And clearing up and confusion. Do not change the fact. That the original, when this was originally discussed. And it was Mr. Han's suggestion that we put some of these. Wonderful things that they were willing to give us in the lease, such as they're going to give up control or the argument of control of the shared parking. That sounded great. It was wonderful. Everybody was happy. And now we've had. Which version are we on now? I can't, I've lost track. Ten maybe? And every single time there's a change. It gives up, the city loses control. And the proposed tenant seems to gain more. So. We, I would strongly suggest that we go, if we get past number one of the due diligence. That we go back to just the basic, sign the original lease. Sometime down the road, we're, we can definitely renegotiate. Why not? We'll have all the time in the world. We can, we won't have this rush of getting it done by the season, which isn't going to happen anyway. Considering it's almost August. And it just seems like we could do this in a more measured. Thoughtful way as opposed to this circular argument. We got to look at this and. In a, in a measured way, so.
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a um. Motion that we uh, postpone further discussion till after executive session on this one item. So.
Questions, comments, and I think. Jimmy, not to pile on, but I think it would be the same thing under new business item sixty, talking about the shared parking lot.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
I don't know what to split up.
Yep, comment here.
Do we have anything else?
How about, how about under eight?
Yeah, well, absolutely. The ordinances would be after executive session.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, be- before we do a vote on executive session, uh. I just want to make a comment too. I think back in April, we had an ideal opportunity. At that point there to have it as is lease transfer. It was offered up. We're also at that time. Made very clear by Mr. Schuler. That he had no interest in the shared parking area. He was willing to make sure that the city, excuse me, had full control over that. We also had some discussion at some point early on too about being more resident friendly with lodging and that sort of thing too. We had that opportunity then and we messed around and decided, decided we're going to play with this lease. We wanted the perfect lease coming out of that. So that's how we've gotten to this point. We've had this thing drag out now for three months. And that's why we still have these circular arguments going on. My stance on this is that we should, we should, we should. Approve this lease. And we should move forward and I think it's my belief that Mr. Schuler has good intentions and has every intention to work closely with the city. And the residents on making sure that we have a Marina down there we can all be proud of. I think most citizens feel that way, but I think we have some that are just making the argument. Quite honestly, to be making the argument and I don't agree with it. So we can go do what we want to do, but I'm going to stand firm. This lease needs to be transferred.
We've got a motion and a second.
Don't we have other stuff to deal with? Like before.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're going to finish the rest of the agenda. Sorry. We're going to take these three items, Katie, to your question and. Put them after executive session, but we'll go ahead and do the rest of the agenda. Thank you. Yeah. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Opposed? All right, old business item E, discussion of day for council mid-year retreat. We had a conversation at our workshop and we talked about this in. Um, January.
Kind of be talking about our retreat.
And we talked about this in January, doing a mid-year check-in, check-up, if you will. We talked about days of the week that would work better for folks. Um, so we are proposing September twentieth. From nine to one, we would use the same facilitator we used in January, I O P resident Rick Bradley. This could be a check-in discussion. John, to your question, you know, what, what are we gonna do? I think there's, uh, some conversation around what's working and what's not working. I think Rick would like to have some conversations with council and staff ahead of time, just to prep accordingly. I mean. Just really it's a swat analysis on what's working and what's not working from a communication flow, from an information flow. From a discussion standpoint, we're not playing the spy game, so settle down, Jimmy. You're good.
Do you know what that date is? Like, the next day is the.
That whole week. Anybody, anybody else that, and if you do know that day, bring this to my head off the top of your head.
What day of the week is it?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, September twenty.
Oh, twenty.
We pull it up a week or.
Say it again.
Can we move it up a week or?
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at another day. Yeah, Wednesday's. Yeah, cause Scott, you were, Wednesdays weren't good. Kevin, you were earlier in the weeks better.
If, if it's, I can, uh, I can move some things out if need be.
We'll come back to you with another day. Desiree, are you good with that? And I'll check with Rick Bradley, make sure he's got, uh, he's got time. All right, item six, new business. Consideration of changes to the annual leave accrual policy in addition of the day after Christmas as an observed holiday. You'll recall, um, twenty twenty-one, we worked with the Extrane Solutions Group. Who conducted a thorough wage and compensation study, provided recommendations for the adoption of a highly competitive compensation system. All of that went into effect on one, one of twenty-two this year from a pay standpoint. Uh, wage and comp study also found that the city's medical deductible, deductibles. Dental and vision premiums and retirement benefits were competitive with our peers. Dependent met dependent medical premiums and annual vacation leave accrual rates were potentially areas of improvement. So the staff looked at a number of peer municipalities around the Low Country that are competitive for talent and developed a proposal. Uh, for consideration by council. We talked about this at our workshop. But essentially the proposal would increase the annual vacation accrual by five days, creates a new category of time of, for time of service between six and fifteen years. And maintains the maximum annual carry forward limit to thirty days. So that's the pro- proposal we talked about, um, in workshops. Nothing's really changed there. And additionally, from a holiday standpoint. Would look to add the day after Christmas to the holiday schedule for staff.
Did you, uh, address the required vacation? Point that I.
Yeah.
Had taught we all about.
I think Desiree, I know we have the encouragement around, uh, having folks take one week just from an audit control standpoint. Uh, do we have any stronger language we want to put in around that or is that?
It's internal control.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, what my recommendation was at the workshop was that we, we, we treat that through the, uh, amendments. And changes to the employee handbook that are going to be, uh, done by the end of the year. A full section there on, on the policy. And I do agree with you that something that we should include. But I think that the, the, the right place to do it is when we do the overhaul and book, and book review.
Good. When will that be, Desiree?
By, by the end of the year, right? Before the end of the year.
Okay.
That's correct.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just asking that with council's approval that be put in.
Yeah.
As part of a policy. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Discussion items. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next, under new business, item B, consideration of purchase of an F one fifty replacement for public works department. This is a fiscal twenty-three budgeted item. You can see using state ATAX money for that. We have up to thirty-seven thousand. The bid you have in your package is roughly thirty-five thousand, Donnie, I think if I'm right, so.
Motion to approve, second.
Are there questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Last item, we've talked about at our workshop as well, uh, discussion and consideration of commissioning a mural for the public work. Building, uh, on the connector. This would really be just giving staff direction to go look at alternatives, find an artist, get a price point and come back to council. So that's really where we are with this. Kevin, sorry, question, no?
No.
Mr. Mayor.
Motion to approve.
Let me get a second, then we can talk.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, this will be using ATAX money for this?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other. Questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Number seven, uh, boards and commission report, board of zoning appeals minutes are attached, planning commission minutes are attached. Accommodations tax advisory committee minutes are attached, environmental advisory committee minutes are attached. Douglas, I know we have two items here that we would like to address. One was our speaker tonight and one other item. Do you want to take that for us?
Correct. Um, yes, thank you, Mayor. The first thing on the agenda is the proposal from Fisher Recycling. The not to exceed number here would be ten thousand dollars for a year agreement. Um, the expectation would be that we would have two pickup sites placed strategically on the island. Thinking somewhere near the front beach and then somewhere near the marina. Um, Fisher Recycling would come by weekly, take that recycling away. Uh, and, and treat it as they, uh, do. And the, um. One aspect of this is, is we do think that this ten thousand dollars could be potentially offset with, uh, grant money. We don't, we don't know that yet. I think the environmental advisory committee felt like it was, it warranted, um, funding even without the. Grant money, so go ahead and get it started, but we do, uh, expect to try to, uh, get that money back. Uh, for this expenditure.
Yeah, go ahead, Jen.
I have a question about the material. Is the glass sold? Once it's, it's picked up? Is there any revenue that comes from the other side of the, the recycling?
Yeah, we go. Yeah, let's suspend the rules of order and let Elizabeth come back up and answer some of these. Come back up to the mic if you don't mind. There may be other questions. Do we need to vote on?
Yes, we do.
So I'll make a motion that we.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
No, there is not revenue, Jen. Collecting or selling the glass. It is not sold.
Elizabeth, just make sure you're into the mic, please, for people on.
It is not sold. Thank you.
So you use, you use, you said five percent for your, um. Tape tops or whatever.
It is a source of supply for that, but then the remaining tonnage is recycled in Beaufort, South Carolina.
And what happens to it then?
It is a, into a building product. It's a foam glass. About six hundred and eighty-six tons last year total.
And that is sold.
It is delivered to that site. It is not sold. It is not a marketable product.
Okay.
Well, you should talk about the grant too, because the grants would be coming from, through your efforts, right?
There are, uh, there's a state agency that, um, could be influenced to offer that. And then also a national, um, partnership through glass recycling is available for that. And we did confirm that this week because we knew that that could come up. So there are some opportunities there for municipal grants.
You know, Elizabeth, what's the success rate then? Cause I mean, this is pretty big behavior change from.
Absolutely.
Resident standpoint and, and then you take, you know, a third of our island is rentals.
Right.
So to change that behavior is even harder. What, what's the success rate been on, on other programs you've rolled out?
We have a drop site at our warehouse and that there is also one public drop site at Firefly Distillery. But this is a pilot public drop site program in this area. In other areas of the state and in other areas of the country, it is a very successful rate. And in fact, Dorchester County also contributes, um, glass. There's five drop sites for glass around their, um, county convenience centers and they also bring glass to us. So I think as far as, um, education goes, which is a primary way of getting the word out there. And public visibility of the containers and/or dumpsters, depending on how, how quickly the program gains momentum. That there is a great percentage that, that happens and that's part of the legwork that we have in plan.
Blair?
If, if you could, I, I'm personally having a hard time with this because we're spending ten thousand dollars. To do something that supposedly the county already does by beginning recycling. So if you could, I know you addressed it with us once before, but if you just address that issue of why, why is this better than what the county already does?
The Charleston County Solid Waste Facility does not currently recycle their glass in our view properly. So, and in, in the industry view of how things are recycled, it is, um. Taken off the end of the conveyor line and it is used and repurposed into landfill cover and also some of their road beds. Um, our discussion with the director there has also revealed that they are hauling a truckload to Atlanta. Of that glass, but that's also a weight expense and that is, that's an expense really. So what is going in those blue bins is not being recycled in Charleston County. Berkeley County does not have any kind of, um, glass recycling program at all. It is all going to. A facility called Repower South. Um, and they don't want the glass, so that is also landfilled and trucked over to, um, our county landfill as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for?
Thank you.
Other comments or? John, I know you've been involved in this speaker, anything else to add from environmental committee?
No, I think the environmental committee supports it. Uh, main reason why is because glasses and being recycled. Said it's being put into landfills currently, so it's offers an opportunity and I think there's a fairly high probability of getting grants. So it'd be eventually, I, I think ultimately it'd be no cost to the city, um, for a year program to trial it.
And, and with the grants, I mean, with timing work so that from a budget standpoint, we hopefully could offset.
I think so. I think I'm going to tell us we could offset it.
Where would they, where would the pickup or drop off places be?
They talked about one somewhere around this area and somewhere around the Marina Fire Station number two.
Run Harris Teeter, I think, you know, the back lot of the.
All to be determined somewhere on this end and somewhere Marina and or Fire Station number two.
And do, this is, do, do the, the glass, does it need to be separated in any way? Sorry, okay. Just glass, any glass.
Think that was a head shake? No.
Yes.
For those watching at home.
Mayor?
Yes, Desiree.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add for the record that the FY twenty-three budget was, council approved a couple of months ago. Did include a provision of fifteen thousand dollars for initiatives, um, that are recommended from the environmental advisory committee. So this would be, um, kind of like a part of that line item. So it is, it is in the budget.
Great, thank you, Desiree. All those in favor, say aye.
I'm sorry, unless I didn't write it down. The only motion that happened at this point was to suspend the rules of order. You didn't actually.
Make, I make a motion that we approve, uh, this agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Nicole. Sorry about that.
Go away.
That's why you're here. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Elizabeth, thank you for coming tonight. Douglas, one other item?
Yes, the, um, next recommendation from the environmental advisory committee has to do with holes being dug on the beach. Um, other communities have adopted ordinances that limit in some way the public's ability to dig holes in the beach. They've been deemed unsafe for wildlife and unsafe for people, um, going across the beach at night. Uh, we have, we have beach patrol that's going down the beach. We have, uh, people walking the beach at night. And this is not, the, the aim of this ordinance is not the little kind of sandcastle hole, but it's these massive. Craters that are being built, um, being dug on the beach, I think for, for enjoyment, um, of those folks. But they become hazardous at some point. So the environmental advisory committee started with other communities. Um, notably Hilton Head was the one that they closest, um, they pretty closely mirrored the Hilton Head proposal. And that, that ordinance had a provision in it that had a size limit and also had a limit on the material of the shovel. So the, the thought was is that a metal shovel, if you show up with a metal shovel, you're, you, you mean business and you're gonna dig a big hole. So the first pass of this had a prohibition of metal shovels and specified that. A hole no larger than six inches could be, could be dug. Um, that went from the environment, environmental advisory committee to public works. Public works felt like really the, the material of the shovel was not the problem and that six inches was probably too. Um, too limiting and, and too challenging to enforce. Because you would start to get into the smaller kind of sandcastle type holes. So went back to the environmental advisory committee and has been revamped. Now to only prohibit holes being dug landward of the mean high watermark. So this is in that part of the sand that the tide doesn't come back in and, and fill in. Um, the thought there is that if it's below high tide, the, the tide smoothes it out and the problem goes away at the next high tide. Uh, the other part of this, um, ordinance says that anybody digging a hole should, uh. Repair that, fill the hole back in before they leave or before nightfall. So this was thought, um, by the environmental advisory committee, not to be something that we would expect. Tickets to be really written for, but more of having something that a beach patrol officer, if they witness something happening. They could correct the behavior. They would have something to reference. Uh, it would also give us the ability to broadcast the need to do this. Um, you know, we could put signs at beach access entrances saying, you know, just fill your holes back in before you leave. And, and, uh, don't dig them landward of the high tide line. So what we're asking for tonight is just for your, um, the ordinance hasn't been put in a, in an ordinance draft yet. We wanted to have your thoughts on it before we went through that process. So it's here for your consideration, but not yet ready for first reading. If you will approve tonight, it would be on your next, uh, agenda for first reading.
And Douglas, um. This would be along the lines of thinking about the turtle season and lights on, lights off. I mean, that's also an ordinance.
That's correct.
Right. I mean, this would kind of fall into that, not for, um, ticket writing to your point, but more just for an educational.
That's correct. That's the way that the beach lighting, um, ordinance works now. The, the, basically the turtle team kind of keeps an eye out and makes notice and, and. That's had a very, uh, it's been an impactful change without any tickets being written.
Yeah. Questions or comments or thoughts?
I like it. I think it's a great, a great way to, to, to deal with this and for anybody here that has dug holes on the beach. If you, if you dig it on the ocean side of the high, high tide mark, it fills itself in if you get more than about a foot and a half, two feet deep. Because it's too wet.
You, you have a friend.
I have a friend, yes.
I'd rather see a. Yeah. If you would, uh, you know, uh, not an ordinance, but just, um. Some sort of, um. Like signs that Douglas mentioned.
Educational.
Educational and set up another ordinance. We're not, we, we don't intend to enforce.
Kevin?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. That's where I was going with it. Um, here we go again, making an ordinance that we're not gonna be able to enforce. And, you know, we're not supposed to, uh, a lot of drinking on the beach, but you can see those empty can, or those trash cans every Saturday and Sunday. Full with beer cans. So, uh, we're not enforcing, you know, uh, we, uh, ban cigarette smoking or smoking on the beach. And that's not getting enforced because you see people smoking all the time. So here we go. Uh, doing another, uh, ordinance to mandate something we can't enforce. So I just, I just can't support it.
It's, go ahead.
Is there a better way? I mean, it's, it sounds like the. The turtle, the lights off for turtles seems to work. And that's, so is it the ordinance that work, that's working or is it the education side that's working? So maybe. Do you need both or is it possible just to have more education?
Yeah, I just personally, if we didn't have the lighting ordinance, there wouldn't be anything to publicize. There wouldn't be anybody to tell people about it. Um, so I, to me, that's the starting, that's the starting point. Um. Because otherwise you're not, there's not a rule, there's not a, you know, you could. That. And, and again, I think the beach service officer who's going down the beach, if there's not an ordinance, I don't think. He would have kind of the. The duty or the feeling that it was his place to advise those people not to do that.
Chief Cornet, anything you'd add to this conversation?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, this is. Something we're already doing. Our beach service officers are assigned on their shift at the end of the day to patrol the beach. And when they patrol the, the beach at the end of the day, they look for holes and they fill those holes. They're doing that when we're patrolling during the day and we see kids digging holes or families digging holes, we stop police officers and beach service officers. And we have those conversations with them. Hey, make sure you bury it back. Here's why. We educate them. It's a great community contact for us. It's non-enforceable, like not an enforcement move, but something where we can have a positive impact with a positive conversation. Educate them and then we move along. The reality is if somebody digs a hole and they leave, I'm not going to know who dug that hole. We're not going to write a ticket for it. And it's not even something that we're necessarily going to enforce because we already have people burying it back up. They're gone by the time we find that hole at the end of the day. Can't write a ticket to them if they're not there and I didn't see them. Dig that hole. So it's a, it's a complicated ordinance and I realize it's not enforceable, but I would tell you, if you pass an ordinance. The phone calls will come to us that we need to be enforcing this ordinance because that is how it happens. Um, and it, and to put it in perspective. A lot of the alcohol on the beach, we do write a lot of alcohol on beach tickets. We don't catch them all. And we still get phone calls about it. If we don't catch every hole that's being dug, we're going to get phone calls about it and it's going to say that we're not. Enforcing it to have the holes buried back. Uh, so we, we already have the solution here. We're already working on this. With our beach service officers who are addressing it during the day and at the end of their shift.
So, so is your recommendation?
My recommendation.
I'm gonna toss it to you.
We, I don't know that. From our perspective, we're already addressing the situation. So.
Is it going to create more phone calls is what I heard?
Yeah.
I, I believe so. But again, it's. For us, we don't get phone calls of people saying, there are so many holes on the beach. What are you doing to address it? I've not had a single one of those phone calls since I've been here because we already have personnel that are addressing that.
Thank you.
So Douglas, I guess. Rusty, sorry.
Uh, yeah, I was just saying this, uh, it, it kind of. You know, dovetails on what Chief Cornet said too. I mean, I'm, I'm not in favor of having ordinances just for the sake of having more ordinances on the book that we don't, that we really don't. Are not able to adequately and effectively enforce. However, I do think that, uh, we have a situation here, which like a lot of our. Other ordinances. Where you have an opportunity for a little kind of education and peer pressure, if you like, I mean, if, if you use that term also. If people know that we don't allow holes on the beach above the high watermark. Then that kind of it feeds upon itself between the education the beach service officers do and in what other people on the beach. Will convey to others, I think can be effective too. So. We may, we may, may not necessarily need a full-blown ordinance to enforce this, but I think good educational and ongoing sort of awareness. Can really help a lot in this situation.
So.
I just recommend we take it back to environmental committee with that message and see what comes about.
Let me see if there is an educational component to it, to this whole conversation that may could happen from signage or rental community and engage them.
Yeah. This is consideration of recommendation to adopt an ordinance.
Yep.
Does that mean doing, you know, uh, a vote?
We don't. This is really just for staff.
Very good. Thank you.
Douglas, Desiree, you all good with that?
Yep.
Thank you. Good conversation. Um, item eight, ordinances, resolutions and petitions. Second reading, item one, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh six, an ordinance to present a referendum question to the citizens of Ala Poms at the next general election. On the question of whether the electors approve reducing the size of city council from a mayor and eight council members to a mayor and six council members.
Motion to approve.
Second. And Rusty, can I ask you to amend that and waive reading? I don't mind reading the, the ordinance, but I prefer not to.
I will amend that to waive the reading. Yes.
And a second by Blair. Thanks. Comments, questions? Yes, sir.
Said before, I'll say it one more time. I prefer that the petition come from fifteen percent of the registered voters on Ala Poms. In order to present a referendum question.
Yeah.
I think the size. Reducing the size of council is fine. I just think the timing is wrong. We need to see how this workshop process. Pans out and then we need to, I think it would be better if we waited until. The first of next year before it's considered, which means we would, we would lose the election cycle this year.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, as you know, I've been vocal about this against this. I'm not against the, uh, referendum. Um, I'm just against the reduction of nine or seven, so.
Katie, sorry, I couldn't see you. Yeah, okay. Got a motion, a second. Nicole, let's do real call on this one.
Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry, Desiree.
Just for the benefit of the public, if. If somebody could restate how the fabric terms and how the elimination of the same square case, that is, that is just important.
Yeah, so I'll do that. The question, uh, specifically on the agenda, uh, or ballot would read something like, shall the city of Ala Poms reduce the size of its city council from a mayor and eight council members to a mayor and six council members? To preserve the staggered terms of the city council, one council member seat would be eliminated at the expiration of the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four term. And a second council member seat would be eliminated at the expiration of the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six term. So this wouldn't have full effect until a few years out, just based on how. Terms are staggered and such. Desiree, is that do it? You good? All right, Nicole, thank you.
Councilor Han.
Aye.
Councilor Gosian.
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson.
Nay.
Councilmember Ward.
Nay.
Councilmember Pierce.
Aye.
Councilmember Myers.
Aye.
Councilmember Popson.
Nay.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Mayor Pounds.
Aye.
Motion passes sixty-three.
Thank you. These next two ordinances, we decided to shift until after executive session. Other first reading items, none. Resolutions and petitions, none.
Like to make a motion going to executive session?
Second.
We just read the. Yeah, just to be official.
Pursuant to S C code. Thirty dash four dash, um, seventy A two.
And this is to receive legal advice on three different items. First is related to potential claims concerning alterations to Ala Palm zoning districts. Next is for discussion of negotiations incident to pose contractual arrangements related to the marina. Actually, our item C, we have voted on in past, so I don't think we need that. So we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Off record at seven thirty-eight. For our residents, we'll go into executive session, come out.